Good evening. I would like to call for this meeting of the Eastern Norton Township Board of Supervisors for this Tuesday, the 22nd of April, 2025 to quarter. We'll start with approval.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the name of our Lord.
My apologies.
Matt Ramatia, please.
Krista Hyner, Township Manager.
Dave Christ, Director of Finance.
Jeff Winterbottom, Assistant Administrator.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Sean Kellkenny, Township Solicitor.
Supervisor of Dance Team Nattel.
Sam DeGroot, Right Chair.
Jeffrey Wanda, Supervisor.
Kevin Devitt, Supervisor.
And Laura McGarrett, Chair.
I would like to announce that the board met an executive session immediately preceding this meeting to discuss matters of personnel and litigation.
And just to remind you, Chairman Chair, you also met the executive session yesterday, Monday, the 21st, to discuss a matter of personnel.
Thank you. That is correct. Thank you for the reminder. We'll start with the approval of the regular meeting minutes for our regular meeting, March 25th, 2025. Would anyone like to... Well, first, does anyone have any questions? Then we'll have an opportunity to review any changes. Would anyone like to put that approval in?
I'll make that motion.
And Supervisor Givanas, any second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Coleman. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Any citizens to be heard this evening? Please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name's Doug Jacobs. I'm a 14-year-old. I've been here for 14 years. Happy belated Easter for all who celebrate it. I want to bring up attention, we have this rooster. Arnold Netflix is having a rooster series going on now. I'm kidding. There's a rooster at 2916. Someone's raising roosters at the crow go hours of the night. Starts at 1:00 in the morning. There's a lot on. I know Susan's over here. She can relate to that. I didn't know if there's in accordance with raising roosters in the residential area.
2916 sunset or 2916 11?
2916.
Way Hall.
Way Hall.
21.
We will be out there first thing in the morning. They're not allowed to look out and have them there. So I appreciate you coming.
And crows all morning?
Excuse me?
Crows all morning?
It's 1:00 in the morning. It's crowing out outside.
I thought they crowed in the morning.
Well, just crow.
I'm kidding. I don't. I dropped the sink.
And to be fair, even the townships that allow chickens, they're not having roosters as a cause of that exact issue. So we will deal with that first.
So it is not presently permitted to have chickens of any gender in the township of East Norton. We've been approached by citizens who are interested in asking for those that were permitted, but thank you for bringing this to mind.
Yeah, thank you for your job.
Thank you.
Susan McLaughlin, 2926, North Whitehall Road. As a gentleman performing a dead chicken. This chicken not only is in the backyard, but he's outside in the front yard, which he's wandering all over the place. And he, this crows and crows and crows and crows all night long. And days, and mornings, and afternoons. But it's 2916 Way Hall Road. And the name of the man is Louis. So he...
Do they have fences?
No. As far as that, the house is kind of like on a level. So he could have one in the back. Most of our properties there on Way Hall do not have fences. We don't. It's wide open. Because I know the police have chased people down there to McDonald's. And you're going right through my yard, my neighbor's yard, and all chasing people.
Like the Dukes of Hazzard. What are you guys doing?
Yeah. They chased one guy. They put him into McDonald's. McDonald's trashed him. He was calling for a taxi. But you know, it's a shame because I had a chicken when I was a kid. I think here, the Montgomery County SPCA has a group of people. They go around and investigate animals that are being mistreated. And technically, this rooster technically is being mistreated because he shouldn't be out there at all times of the night. I mean, I had to do something with a house across the street with a dog. So I have family who's basically looking at him and repeating, Montgomery County SPCA, and they came out and investigated it. So I mean, they can. You don't always call our police to come out and do that, but you know, there's certain ones that you can call. But he missed a little bit much. It really is. And I've seen him out on the front lawn. So you know, I don't know. I don't know what the whole... I haven't been creeping around the backyard. Sorry.
We will take care of that.
Yes, you should have.
I'm not. I'm not creeping around the backyard. Thank you. But the gentleman that came over, Doug came over earlier in the pension, because he lives up the hill from me. So he can hear. So I mean, we're right on the level there. So we just wanted to bring it to your attention. So I thought, you know, I had chickens when I was... I never had that problem. And when they got a little bit too noisy, I found him another home.
I assure you, those roosters, they...
How does it just stay on Way Hall Road?
Your model was that.
Let's have it on my case.
I'm gonna see it.
We will find that.
Yes. Are there any other citizens to be heard before we vote? Okay. Before we dive into the agenda and vote on this next item in particular, I wanted to share a few remarks to provide a little context. And forgive me if I read from my screen here, but I want to make sure you're right. As a Board of Supervisors, we are always on the lookout for new ways to optimize the quality and efficiency of the leadership and service provided to our employees, residents, and visitors, and other stakeholders, as well as pragmatic solutions to the inevitable challenges and changes that face us every day. With his recent appointment by Governor Josh Shapiro to Montgomery County Controller, our Township Manager, Robert Hart, joins a long tradition of East Norton leadership team members being tapped for a higher calling. This is a testament to his integrity, competence, and leadership, of which our Township has been the grateful beneficiary for the past nine years. So while we are very excited to have this caliber of talent serving us at the county level, we regret that in order to give his new assignment the deserved level of focus and attention, he has submitted his resignation as East Norton Township Manager effective May 1st, 2025. We further regret that this comes at the same time as the dedicated and diligent David Christ has expressed his intention to retire as East Norton Township Finance Director after 10 years of outstanding service. We are actively working on the transition plan for his role. Therefore, we are grateful that Bob has offered to stay on as a consultant to support the transition, at least through our next reorganization meeting, January 6th, 2026. And you'll see that is one of the items later on in the agenda. We also see this as an opportunity to pilot an alternative, more economical operating model, which has been utilized successfully by other municipalities and even by us, for example, for engineering services. So just to quote Bob in the closing remarks of his letter of resignation, "East Norton proud, East Norton strong. We are always willing to try something new. We are always willing to pitch in and do a little bit of double duty for as long as we have to to make things right." So I want to thank Bob for his incredible service. I want to thank Dave for his incredible service. And assure the members of this great community that we're going to have it okay here. We're going to get through this and we're going to find the right way to manage the township, to manage the township finances, and get through the transition period. Any other Supervisors want to remark on that before we vote? Okay. So I will make the motion to accept the resignation of Township Manager, Robert Hart, effective May 1st, 2025.
I'll second that.
And you, Vice Chair Coleman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Pack your stuff.
Okay. Next on the agenda, yes.
All right. 2025 Road Improvement Program Proposal. I'd like to call in Township Engineer Krista Hyner to convene.
Thank you, Supervisor. The Santos, before you, is a proposal for engineering services for this year's 2025 Road Improvements Program. We recently, the board authorized this to be bid, but this would be for plant preparation, liquid fuels grant administration, construction observation, and all the things to get the diggers in the ground. So the total number for that proposal is $30,000, and we're requesting your approval of that number.
And you, would you have any questions? Anybody like to put that in the motion?
I'll put a downhill form motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Devitt. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Supervisor Santos. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda is ENGA donation. I'd like to call in our Financial Director, Dave Christ.
Thank you, Supervisor McDevitt. As you may recall, every year, we attach a budget to a donation to the Eastern Norton Girls Athletic Association in support of the programs that they offer to townships, townships' families and children. In 2024, ENGA has reported that they've had almost 100 township girls who have participated in their various programs, representing close to 80 different families. They've run programs for fall softball, spring softball, field hockey, travel basketball, winter basketball, and summer basketball. The 100 children represents actually one of the highest numbers of participants in the last few years. So the programs have been definitely growing over time. For this year, we budgeted $3,000 from the Price and Recreation Fund as a donation to the ENGA. And tonight, Township Staff is requesting the board's approval of the donation of $3,000 to the Eastern Norton Girls Athletic Association. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
I have none. Any feels? Anyone want to put that into motion?
I'll put that in a motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Coleman. Anyone else?
I'm sorry?
Thank you, Supervisor Givanas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Okay. Voice-over internet protocol phone system purchase. Again, I'll call on the diligent and beautiful Dave Christ.
You call him beautiful?
Yes. What did the chairman? I don't know my ears, but I'm sure it was Derek. They're all dedicated.
He's also beautiful and beautiful.
Dave, don't retire. He's so beautiful.
That's why he's retired.
Thank you, Supervisor Givanas. And contrary to popular relief, the Finance Department did not place a lock on the every mission unit. Tonight's meeting, we just figured it made it go a little bit faster compared to the prior. It's just that funny time of year when it comes down to HVAC systems. Tonight, before you, Township is requesting authorization to purchase a new phone system, basically a new digital phone system. Our current Avaya system has been in place since 2010. We've gotten a full 15 years out of that system and has been working pretty successfully. Last year, we started having some difficulties with it, some hiccups with it operating, some regular interrupts in our service, and it's become very, very difficult to get any type of replacement parts. So it's lived a good life for us, and the Township has used it very successfully. But the time has come where we need a new phone system. We've been looking at new replacement voice-over internet protocol systems. We've had an upgrade to our internet system with Comcast and our follow-up for Verizon. So we've got the appropriate speed necessary to do it. Most people are familiar with voice-over internet systems. They tend to operate cheaper than traditional analog systems. The handsets are less expensive than typical analog systems. We've calculated that we should have a reduction in maintenance costs of about 15% to 20% annual in our phone systems. So overall, it's a good, it'd be a good replacement system. So what the Township is recommending and asking for tonight is for the approval of the purchase of a voice-over internet protocol system, along with Yeelink T54W handsets and installation and configuration for a grand total of $12,550 from TBS Networks. TBS Networks is a township-located business over on Valerie Road, over in the industrial center. They've also been the provider and supporter of our existing phone system for the last 15 years. So this is their recommendation, knowing what our needs are and also what our existing system has been used for. So that's what we're asking for authorization for tonight. Be glad to answer any questions you might have. And I will say it's a budgeted item in our capital reserve.
Yeah, and it's fairly modest, assuming that this is going to last us another 15 years or so?
The replacement would be the handsets.
Okay.
And that's the good news. So as, since it uses all of our internet lines and all our ethernet connections that we have currently, as time goes on, we may have to increase our internet capabilities, which we would tend to do anyway. But in terms of actual cost, it would be replacement handsets as they were needed.
Chicken? Was it a screen?
No, police car, part of the ship doing inspections.
Gorgeous. Thank you. Check in the side.
I will have that.
Check in your side.
As far as Stan goes, it's sort of related. You know, we've had, the hiccups have increased to such a degree that Stan is back up here sometimes off hours resetting and locking on. So this will break the law.
And I'm just, I mean, we're essentially a customer service center, so I accept the fact that we need a more, even though we're moving to voice-over IP, that we need a more traditional, like, phone-type system. Did we evaluate or explore more like a Microsoft Teams, you know, calling or something like that?
We didn't go down, we purposefully didn't go down that route.
Okay, just because it didn't?
We wanted to strike a balance between traditional needs and more advanced capabilities. And we put a team together of different personnel, including representatives from the police department, so they represent at least 50% of our users. And this particular system and this particular approach is best suited for the township and the services we provide.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone want to move to a table?
I'll put that in a motion.
Supervisor Givanas, any second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Coleman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Monthly expenditures, March 25th through April 21st, 2025. Accounts payable, $343,433.59. Payroll, $485,295.45, giving us a grand total of $828,729.4.
And we'd be glad to answer every question you might have.
I have none.
I'd like to make a motion to approve about the expenditures from March 25th, 21st, 2025.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Santos. And McDevitt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Hearing none, that motion carries. And finally, I would like to make a motion to affirm an agreement between Premier Management Consultants and East Norton Township, and our Solicitor, Sean Kellkenny, will present this.
Thank you very much. As was referenced by the Chair, in this transition time to cover that, Mr. Hart has graciously agreed to step up and continue helping in the management of the Township. So we have an agreement here that was negotiated between myself and Premier Management Consultants. In paragraph one, just lays out all the administrative duties that he will perform. Two will be his management services fee, which deals with the hours or rate in every subject, which will be a cost-saving to the Township. There's a clause talking about additional services if they are necessary. There's an indemnification clause, a termination clause. Also, two, an ability to amend this agreement if the Township so chooses in the future. And it's basically a standard management consultant agreement. Our office has done these with other boroughs, first-class townships and second-class townships. And this is a performance with many of the other agreements that our office has directed in the past. Thank you very much. If the board had any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. As I mentioned, I have moved that we approved the agreement. Anyone second?
Second.
And Vice Chair Coleman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Hearing none, that motion carries. I would like to invite Mr. Hart to...
Okay, a couple quick, please, and then I will address the resignation rule real quick. Our Easter egg hunt, this past Friday, overwhelming turnout, as you're well aware.
They get a pretzel.
Correct. Correct. I walked away, came back, we're in a pretzel. Something wrong. I would say you could take any six townships and combine their Easter egg hunts, and they wouldn't be as big as ours. So the reality, though, is this size of an Easter egg hunt requires a lot of preparation, and it's something we learn, something new every time we do it. We had a lot of, we predict or project after looking at some of the aerials, 1,200 to 1,500 people throughout the Easter egg hunt. Massive turnout. We learned a lot. I 'd be even more prepared next time. The Philly Fanatic and Louis, with some character, were extremely popular.
Did you call Louis some character?
Yeah, he's really a moron.
I'm sorry I'm not familiar with Louis. I am now, but by the way, it's a big hit. And just, you know, for those who weren't there, it was a massive turnout. Very successful, but continuing our experience for Stan. Just an update of the tennis courts, the tennis slash football court, the new ones that are about to, construction's about to start. We are ready to go with that. Brett has not actually started yet because of other things catching up due to weather, but it's imminent. So that construction will start any day, which is right out behind our parapipper ball courts. And lastly, just one personation, I would thank you for the kind words, and more so for the opportunity to serve this Board of Supervisors and all prior boards, and all the residents of East Norton Township. I've been blessed. Many managers look around, and honestly, they're envious of the fact that I've had the opportunity to work with outstanding staff. You talk about David Christ, even David Christ is irreplaceable. But it's more than that. Jeff here has come from the property sector and transformed his role in a way that really was novel to municipal government. I have our public work, Brett Stevens, and our cameraman back there took Brad. There was almost nothing they can't do. When other townships go out and have to pay contractors to do, our guys do it, do it as well, if not better, for a fraction of that cost. So this outstanding staff has made my job, and our chief, I know I could always miss someone here, but our chief, outstanding, our parks and rec, you know, has blown the doors off of programs and activities. It's just an absolute honor to have worked with these individuals, to serve with these individuals, and to serve this board. And lastly, I couldn't have made it through any day without my boss, Marj Thomas, who's in the back. She keeps me from walking into walls and missing meetings and missing phone calls, so immeasurable. But truly, and I know a lot of people say this, if you know me well, this is my family. Paul, all part of my family, and it is truly, not just as I say. So I thank you. I do look forward to the opportunity to help as a consultant to help you transition in a variety of ways into a future leadership, career change in this township. And I will, I assure you, I will do my best in whatever's needed. And I look forward to East Norton thriving, and I wish everyone the best. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for reminding me that I forgot to add that, that part of the reason why we feel confident in this plan, transitioning Bob to a consultancy, you know, capacity, part-time, you know, working on Dave's success plan, is because there's such a strong leadership team and staff here at the Township. Chief Brennan has brought a new level of stability and competency to our police force. Jeff Winterbottom is a very important member of our kind of intimate circle that needs an executive session. We have great partners with Krista, and then Margie keeps us from walking into walls as well. And as Bob mentioned, others who are not here, who, you know, really keep everything running so smoothly that we don't have to worry.
And as I can add, there's been so many residents. I know Mrs. Dratun, you used to make the best of her community. I could stop off around, I could go down the list of just some of the most special people in the world, and they live in our community, and that brought me into it wholeheartedly.
Bob is still accepting donations and breastfeeding and other treats, at least, you know, for the next...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Anything else from members of the township staff, the board?
I'll just say, I was lucky enough to have been on the board that appointed me. I'm like the last one on the Aikens. But yep, you have to look around. I'm the oldest. But I think...
He's tenured.
He's tenured, not the oldest. But I think, I will say that, having been here for nine years and seeing the transformation in the campus and how we do things, and I think that it needs to be said for anyone who, Madam Chair, you're really eloquent with your words. But I think that, rest tax, I think that everyone in the township needs to know that, you know, this is a different direction, moving our management to a consulting capacity. But there are cost-saving measures that will benefit the township. We want to ensure you, you're a consultant. So there is cost savings, and we are getting the same product for less. And it's a hell of a product. You're the second manager I've worked with, and you're my favorite. So I wish you well.
I'd like to, actually, Friday during the Easter egg hunt, I want to commend the entire Township staff for Aiden Yovan's job. Chief Brennan, please thank the police who did an outstanding job, because I understand parking was from here, the multi-service building, all the way down to Trumtown Avenue. Chief McDevitt, you know, our fire department was also available to provide, you know, access to the trucks and help with parking as well. And so, you know, that was just one example of how we, as a township, have come together to pull off these great events. And so as we approach the summer months, we have a lot more to do and a lot more events, and I'm looking forward to them all. So thank everyone for Aiden Yovan's job.
And I'd just like to add, too. I was there at the Easter egg hunt, and usually, the Easter egg hunts are, you know, starts at 10 o'clock and we're done by 10:45, and by 11 o'clock, it's a ghost town. There were still people there well afternoon getting face paint and picking up, I think they were giving away little baby bunnies, water ice. It was a beautiful day, but somebody said it looked like a mini community day. It was that crowded. And that's a tribute to the staff here. And for people who don't know, who aren't in the Township building on a regular basis, there's not a staff of hundreds here. We do a lot with the few people we have, with the league people, and they work together. And, you know, job descriptions are, you know, they're good, but anything that's required of them, they do. And I just, I think that's a tribute to Bob and to Dave and the chief. I mean, it's been great, and we hope to continue that. And like Bob had said, we are saving money. We're going to tax increase tax today in 15 years because he manages the Township's money like his own. And we appreciate that. You know, you really find somebody like that. So I just want to commend you guys for that.
Since it is 10,000 degrees in here. And speaking of events.
We have a voice for upcoming meetings. Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, 7:00 p.m., zoning hearing board. Thursday, May 15th, 2025, 7:00 p.m., viewer relations commission meeting. Monday, May 19th, 2025, 6:30 p.m., historical advisory committee. Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, 7:00 p.m., planning commission meeting. And Tuesday, May 27th, 2025, 7:00 p.m., board of supervisors regular meeting. Upcoming events, Monday, May 5th, 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., bingo, please RSVP. Thursday, May 15th, 2025, 1:00 p.m., movie night day, also please RSVP. Hope it's a good movie. Saturday, May 17th, 2025, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., plant swap, please register. Monday, May 19th, 2025, 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., bingo, once again, please RSVP. Monday, May 26th, 2025, Memorial Day, so the offices will be closed. And finally, Friday, June 6th, 2025, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., Custom Park featuring AM radio.
Very nice. And this Saturday, April 26th, is Norrington Little League Opening Day over in West Norrington, Centennial Park. Tim, I did forget to mention earlier, but I'm mentioning you now because I know as also as a dedicated member of the township, you're also a dedicated leader within the Little League. So, we're looking forward to that. As Matt Bradford once said, it's like, it's like motherhood and apple pie. It's a really fun day. There's a parade and lots of games and also, you know, fun activities that help support the Little League. So, please consider coming up.
If I can add, after Vice Chair Coleman's announcement of those different activities, I just signed up.
It's not been seven retired people doing two jobs, too. Very nice. All right. Any other comments from our citizens?
I have a question.
Yes.
For Bob before you, please. What's going on with the dog park? Did you have a meeting?
We need you to go to the state.
Sorry, name and address.
Sorry.
And I don't have a lot, I don't have a lot for you, but.
You have notes.
Yeah, we share a group.
Just wanted to find out about the dog park.
When I said it, Mark.
I was just going to look who I go to next.
Oh, well, I'm going to stay on the door. Don't worry. As I mentioned before, some of this is vague, but it's growing. It needs the two growing seasons. They have basins there. They have decided where they need fencing. This is what came out of the last meeting, not the most exciting stuff.
Well, fencing is.
But there's some areas that they didn't fence in that they're talking about. Fencing, I'm not sure where they're, they're not doing anything with that portion yet. They're trying to save some money by planting smaller trees, et cetera. They, they're adding some amenities. So, part of the next phase now, because you know they have, it's, if you go over it, it's pretty impressive when you first see it because it's open and it's just not, there's no dogs. There's no roosters. It's just open. Well, they are, they're in the process now of getting fences made, bicycles, bike racks, some signage. So, there's going to be that part. Not thrilled about this, but I understand they need a porta potty of some, you know, I'm just having my fan porta potties that are burst out, but I understand they're necessary, you know. They will be needed. So, they're, eventually, they're looking at maybe an avilion somewhere close to get you out of the sun, to maybe have some charging stations. The fourth year organization, the Friends of the Dog Park, is the next thing they're supposed to talk about. So, that's really where they're at. Lot of planning, clearly, a lot of things on orders about the accessory-type stuff. So, it's going along. They know they have told Fall to get these things in place and get some of this in order. But that's really what's planned. So, I can, again, I'm just waiting to find out with the organization because the organization is what clearly, where I, you know, that I know, that I truly believe would be an excellent addition to it. And that was our plan from early on. So, we'll keep going, and as soon as we hear anything about that to start it, then I'll make sure we reply.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Anyone who went over to adjourn the meeting?
Say move. Second.
And he's going to send the.
I think all worse.
I'm on my favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.